... I'm a nation, under God, invisible with the routine justice for all.
And four is public appearances, public's opportunity to speak on any subject that is not a specific agenda item. Item five is discussing, consider the minutes from our regular meeting from July 15th, 2019. Any edits, corrections, or further discussion on the minutes? Motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's second. Any other discussion?
I just had one correction I made in seven C. It indicates that I see an advantage in revenue sharing with the town for Flood Hall, and that's not true. Maybe I said I did not see the advantage in revenue sharing because I think at the joint meeting they said if we share with revenue then we'd be asked to repair the HVAC system and all the major... So if we could just add, does not see an advantage in revenue sharing with the town in seven C. I'll make that change with that... approval with that change.
I'll second the change.
All right. Any other discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. Moving on to item six is a presentation to the board from Full Spectrum Solar. Just come up and state your names so we have the record.
Yeah. My name's Burke O'Neil. Thank you for having me here tonight. I tested this all and I've got numerous backups.
Yeah, that's right.
As I said, my name's Burke O'Neil. I'm co-owner of Full Spectrum Solar, and I'm going to just talk for a few minutes about solar energy in general and then talk a little bit about how the Village and Cottage Grove might be able to utilize it on one of their buildings. And if you're curious at all, this is Fire Station 14, City of Madison, and we're all hoping that they'll expand the system on more easily installable areas like the roof instead of the awning, but definitely the effect was really pretty incredible. So a little bit about Full Spectrum Solar. We started in 2002. We have three degree engineers, an architect, two master electricians, adjournment electrician, and we have a number of NAPCEP certified installers, and we've installed, I think the last count was about 640 systems in the state. If you've been paying attention to the news at all, you've probably seen that the growth of solar energy globally at the state and local level has been really phenomenal. For example, in the U.S., in the past three years, the number one source of new power generation has been solar. We're now to the point, like, in some areas like Germany and California where there's periods of time where they're producing 50% of their electricity from solar energy. And honestly, if you would have asked me if that was possible 10 years ago, I don't think I would have believed it. But our own company, my brother and I started in 2002, and it was very part-time, and we're up to five trucks going out every day. We have 15 installers, so it's really incredible to see the growth. And a lot of that is the module prices are about a tenth the cost they were when I started in the industry in 1998, but we also have better software for planning, better racking, better power electronics, and it's really gratifying to see that all come together and result in the growth we're experiencing. So just a real quick overview of the main components. On the roof or on the rack, you have a photovoltaic array consisting of photovoltaic modules, and those produce direct current like battery would. And then you have an inverter that takes the direct current and converts it to alternating current. And I'm not sure where I got this slide. Nobody in the world calls it a power conditioning unit. They call it an inverter. But that power that's produced from the inverter is connected on the load side of the customer's meter, and in the easiest case, that's the main electrical panel. Sometimes that's another electrical cabinet or we tie in at the electric meter, but generally these are set up so that the solar is putting power in on the customer's side of the meter, being used in the building, and any excess is going back. Conversely, any additional power needed is coming in. The photovoltaic modules installed on commercial systems are mostly going to be monocrystalline silicon, about 18% efficient. Common size is a 72-cell module. That's about 370 watts, and that's sort of a nominal rating based on sun striking the panel perpendicularly on a relatively cool day. In the factory, they tested it 1,000 watts per meter squared, but it's a representation so that you can compare different modules. And most of the systems we're installing have one or more inverter. That's the device that converts the direct current to alternating current. And you'll also see on any roof installations today, module-level electronics, either for every pair or individual module. And the reason you'll see those is 2017 National Electrical Code requires rapid shutdown, and what that means is that within 30 seconds, if you turn the inverter off or if you cut the AC power, the voltage drops to a relatively safe 80 volts or lower, and that's for first responders, firefighters, so that if they're working on the roof, they don't have to worry about the shock hazard or worry as much. Those power... Those module-level electronics can be more sophisticated, do things like optimizations so that if one panel's shaded, it doesn't affect any of the others, or if you have different panels producing at different efficiency levels or different orientations, they basically are operating independently, but your main power conversion is still happening in, you know, one, two, three larger inverters, and those are, you know, down in the electrical room or down at ground level, not up on the roof. I don't know. Do people want to ask questions, or should I just wait to the end?
I just have one quick. You mentioned that, so take a house, that there's enough that produces energy for the house, and then it can even send some back, so, right? Is that what you were... How much gets sent back to a central source?
Well, in Wisconsin, systems that meet certain size and design criteria can net meter, and so when they're producing more power than being used, that power goes back and, you know, it's going back into the grid and running the neighboring buildings wherever there's a load on the grid nearby. And it's not uncommon if we install a system that, say, on a yearly basis, covers, let's say, 80% of the electric load, maybe 50, 60% of it is self-consumption, so as the solar's producing power, it's going into the building, but the remainder is being produced in the middle of the day when maybe nobody's around and there's no use, the remainder's going back out onto the grid, and then that person's getting credits that they can use at night. And that's actually a really good segue because Alliant has some rules. You definitely want a net meter as much as you can because any power you send back to the grid, you want to get full retail cost. And Alliant allows you to put up to a 20-kilowatt system. That's the peak DC rating in the system and net meter, but a lot of times for a commercial install, you're going to want to put in a system larger than 20 kilowatts, in which case you're going to want to size the system so that most of the power's being self-consumed because if power goes back onto the grid, you're just getting maybe a quarter or half the value that you would be getting if you were reducing the amount of power coming in by consuming it as it's being produced. Does that make any sense? So if you're... If you produce, say, like, let's say you have a large commercial facility and you covered 100% of your electric use on a yearly basis, there'd be a lot of times, like in June, maybe when it's not super hot out yet, where you're pushing power back to the grid, and if you aren't in that net metering category, you're just getting credited at a much lower rate.
Is this actually put in the battery systems then to store the energy, or the cost is probably prohibitive not to do that?
At this point, batteries are pretty cost effective or cost prohibitive. You would have to... In some places, like where electric rates are a lot higher, like Hawaii or Australia, you can use batteries so that, you know, during the day, instead of sending power back, you're charging up the batteries, and then at night, you're drawing it. But at this point, unless you're really motivated to, you know, cover more than, let's say, 25, 30% of your electric use on a yearly basis, it's a lot of cost to put in that kind of battery storage, and electricity's still relatively inexpensive here. So that... It's a good point, though, because that could be totally different in five or 10 years with the mine. Battery technology keeps getting better also.
And do you have MG&E up there? Do you know if Alliant also does net meter?
They allow you to... You can put in a... Alliant's rules, they allow you to put up to 20-kilowatt system and net meter. Anything larger than that, if you're producing more than what's being used in the building in real time, you get that avoided cost, that lower rate. Alliant also has what's called a monthly true-up, and they look at each month, and even if you have a system that's less than 20 kilowatts, if in a given month you produce more than what you're using, that excess is credited at that lower avoided cost. So there's a couple of things you want to consider. With Alliant, even if you're below 20 kilowatts, you might want to only offset, say, 70% of the electric use on a yearly basis. Otherwise, it's likely that certain months, you'd be producing more than you're using and getting a lower credit for that. So the economic sweet spot might be more like 70 or 80% of your electric use on a yearly basis rather than 100%. MG&E trues up on a yearly basis, and they allow you to put in a system up to 100 kilowatts, so that's a lot better. If you produce twice what you use in June and July, you can use those banked kilowatt-hours essentially in the winter because you, when you send it back, you got full retail cost. So talking a little bit about the municipal services building, there's three separate meters, 200, 230, and 240 Progress Lane. 230 Progress Lane uses a lot less electricity than the other two, so it may not be worth considering. It would be like a small residential system, and that can be expensive on a big commercial project because the interconnection might be difficult. If it's a real straightforward interconnection, maybe. I haven't actually been out to the site, so... So for now, I just looked at 200 and 240 because those are the big, relatively large electric users. As I mentioned, Alliant net meter system's up to 20 kilowatts. 200 Progress Lane has the electric use that would require about 150 kilowatts, you know, to cover 70% of the use. So we're above that 20-kilowatt point, which means for economic reasons, we'd probably want to size the system smaller so that there's not a lot of power going back at avoided cost. What we've found from looking at, like, schools and offices is that usually we can, on a yearly basis, cover about 25%, and only 5 or 10% of the power production will go back at avoided cost. And in other words, maybe 90% of the power will be consumed from the system in the building, and very little will be excess going back to the grid. And at this point, the... With these smaller photovoltaic systems, if you only get three or four cents a kilowatt-hour that avoided cost, it really pushes your economic payback period out. So what I'd probably recommend, at least initially, is looking at somewhere around 50 kilowatts or 25%. You might be able to have an engineering firm that could look at, like, 15-minute data and then look at, like, 20 years of meteorological data, given the system, and line them up. You might be able to go a little bit larger, want to scale that back a little bit, but just for initial budgetary considerations, that's probably what I would look at. For 240 Progress Lane, the electric use is small enough that you can stay below that 20-kilowatt net metering limit, but again, we have that monthly true-up, so we don't want to be producing lots of extra in the summer months that you're getting credited at a lower rate. So you might shoot for covering 75% or, sorry, 70% of the electric use, or about 15 kilowatts. And then the last design consideration is, again, I haven't actually been out to the site yet, but it looked to me like a very shallow pitch, you know, maybe 3, 7 degrees, somewhere in there. And because you've got a lot of roof area relative to the electric use and it's facing south, I think it'd be worth tipping the panels up another 10 degrees to reduce the... Improve the efficiency and reduce snow loading a little bit so cover. So I put together just a preliminary layout sketch, and this is over 200 kilowatts, so if you started with a smaller system based on economic reasons, but Alliant changed their net metering rules, or photovoltaics got a lot less expensive than they are now, you'd have plenty of roof area to expand. And in fact, because the roof pitch is shallow, you could even have panels on the back, on the north-facing roof, tilted up to the south. You would just need to space them out a little bit further so they didn't shade each other. I don't know if people can really see this, but putting this together for 200 and 240 Progress Lane, you could put in something like a 68-kilowatt DC system that would produce about 88,000 kilowatt-hours a year, and you'd be looking at a total cost of probably about Again, this would be covering about a little bit more than 70% of the smaller electric meter use and 25% of the larger electric meter use. You could probably get somewhere around $46,000 in incentives currently, and on the next slide, I'll talk a little bit about the incentives. You're probably looking at about 10 years to a positive cash flow, or if you're really pessimistic, there's this modified cash flow payback, and what that is, is we assume at 25 years that you had to remove and reinstall the system, say, for like a re-roof and replace all the inverters. So that's kind of like a worst-case, you know, financial consideration. I'm guessing if it's a metal-ribbed roof, it probably could have more life than that, but this is one way to look at it. One thing to point out is if one major incentive for photovoltaic systems is the 30% tax credit and the five-year accelerated depreciation, and unfortunately municipalities can't directly take advantage of that, there are some entities like Legacy Solar Co-op that can... They work locally, and they can arrange for a for-profit entity to partner up and essentially indirectly share some of those tax credits and tax benefits with nonprofits and municipalities, so that might be worth looking into. The investor's going to want to return, but they're basically indirectly sharing some of the tax benefits. As I said, I'd talk a little bit more about the incentives I included here. What this... What you're seeing here in the blue is that's the total energy use of those two meters based on six months of utility data I had, and the yellow's the power production. You can see the power production's a lot higher in the summer. Usually that coincides also with higher electric use for the air conditioning, but that's where you have the consideration of not wanting to overproduce a lot of power in any given month. The incentives I included in this analysis were the Focus on Energy RECIP grant, and that's a competitive grant program. I'm hearing that there's likely going to be financing for that next year. It's probably less than a one-day, you know, timeframe to put together the grant application, and you can ask for up to 50 cents per kilowatt-hour of estimated production in the first year, but part of the scoring is cost effectiveness to the program. So if you ask for the full 50 cents per kilowatt-hour, you may be scored a lot lower and not get any funding at all. This last round, we were asking for about 25 to 30 cents per kilowatt-hour of production, and that's what I included here. That's where that $26,000 comes from. And Renew administers another program called Solar for Good, and they will basically donate up to $20,000, which I think, assuming that program's still in place next year when you do the project, they would donate $20,000 worth of modules towards installation. So that's where we come up with this net cost. Just a few closing points. Solar energy systems are very long-lasting. The modules have a 25-year power output warranty. The racking is all stainless steel and aluminum. The electrical can... Actual wiring can be expected to last as long as the wiring in the building. The inverters have a standard 12-year warranty, but for relatively nominal costs, you can have that extended all the way up to 25 years. So we've got over 600 systems and probably have a service call once a month or every other month. It's... We don't even have a dedicated, like, service person. We just send our crews out on the way to a job. So it's pretty low risk if it's installed by a reputable installer. Right now, we've had relatively flat utility rates, but that could change if there's a carbon tax, if there's some interruption. If you actually look at the last 15 years, utility rates have gone up on average to about 3%. So I think we'll probably return to that, you know, at some point. And then also, by investing in solar energy, you're keeping money in the community and you're providing a visible representation of the environmental, you know, commitment of the village. So thank you very much. I can stay for questions.
I had a couple of questions. So other than costs, that you, you know, you kind of give us an idea what costs would be, what... And not to flog a dead horse, I guess, but can you cover with us what the environmental benefits would be? I mean, what the benefits of solar over anything else?
Well, I don't have, like, the statistics, like, you know, how many miles of cars driven and stuff off the top of my head, but the last I've heard from some peer-reviewed articles is that the photovoltaic modules being produced today have a very low amount of embodied energy compared to what they're going to produce over their lifespan. So Sharp was saying that basically in two to three years, you've recouped the cost of manufacturing and the energy that it takes to manufacture it, and then after that, you're producing, you know, more energy than what went into manufacturing it. And then I've read some statistics that it's still less than five years, even if you factor in, you know, like transportation, the racking, you know, and these other things. So once you have the system installed, there's, you know, there's this big initial cost, but the fuel is free. So currently in Wisconsin, we're still getting close to 50... I think that's changing rapidly, but we're still getting close to 50% of our electricity from coal, and, you know, that's...
We know what that is.
Yeah, there's some very large environmental costs with that. I think the American Lung Association said if you look at Wisconsin's fuel mix, and you don't look at any environmental costs, but you just look at the effect on, like, asthma and lung health and stuff like that, it's probably 10 or 12 cents a kilowatt-hour, which is about what, you know, electricity costs. And then I think you could, you know, depending on your beliefs, you could add a lot for, you know, carbon dioxide and other pollutants that are being produced.
So having, you know, knowing that footprint that that makes, do you see Alliant changing their rule? I mean, it seems like, you know, MG&E is being a little bit more proactive, saying, hey, we want to be committed to this visibility and, you know, environmental visibility and all that. Do you see Alliant changing that? Because you would think that that would be beneficial to them for everybody to see that they're trying to make it better.
Well, I think what the utilities are, they've always been like, solar doesn't work, we're not interested in it.
Sure.
You know, then... And then now they've kind of changed their tune. They're really into solar energy, but only if they install it. You know, I don't know the regulations exactly, but my understanding is they get a pretty decent guaranteed return, somewhere around 10%. So they'd rather make that capital expenditure on a photovoltaic field rather than, you have you make that investment. And so I... Unless there's, like, state-level rules or the PSC change things, I don't really see the utilities, like, doing anything but making it a little bit more expensive and difficult to interconnect unless you want to buy into one of their programs. I think, depending on who's, you know, what I'm hearing from new PSC people is, you know, their feeling is like, oh, this is, you know, this is a public good, and we've got these monopolies that are regulated, and one of the things we can do is make sure that individuals, businesses, and municipalities still have access to this grid that basically was built with our rates. And so hopefully that'll kind of hold the line. There's been some, you know, Alliant actually, and We Energies have actually made it a little bit more difficult, expensive to tie in, and they've changed some of the rules, like, you know, the net metering limits have come down. You know, instead of trueing up on a yearly basis, it's a month. I'm hoping the PSC will just kind of hold the line.
That says a lot about them. Where do you see the future of solar challenges and what you're personally, as a business owner in this field, most excited about?
Well, gosh, what am I most excited about? It's been, you know, there's always, like, a lot of press releases that come out about the next greatest thing, but what I've seen is it's just kind of a slow, steady improvement in efficiency and reliability. So really, I think if we continue to, as a small solar energy contractor, as long as we still have access to the grid, I think we're going to keep driving out costs. I don't think it's going to be like, maybe not as rapid as it's been, but I think we're getting really close to that break-even point where this is really going to take off, so that's very exciting to me. It's also... It's exciting to, like, see some manufacturing happening in Canada and the U.S. So we're really happy to have... We've gotten to the size point where we don't have to always buy through a distributor. We can actually buy directly and inventory it so we can get domestic product for cost comparable to imported, so that's something I've been excited about. I think also electric vehicles, I think we're going to see a lot of improvement in that in the next five years, and a lot of our customers lately are people who are like, I want to put solar in because I'm going to be buying electric cars, and I, you know, the grid's still got too much dirty production in it. And actually, Solar Edge has a combination inverter EV charger that's pretty slick. So... Any other questions?
Well, we have access to the page that had the numbers on it. I couldn't read it.
Oh, I can email.
Send it out.
Yeah. And that's actually kind of just a first take at it, too. I could probably in the next month get, like, 12 months of utility data, so it's not extrapolated from a small, you know, and put some more solid together. Yeah? Yeah, I even had a hard time reading it online monitor.
Let us just read it.
All right. Well, feel free to email me or call me if you have any follow-up questions, and thanks so much again for having me here and talk to you on this.
Thanks.
All right. Moving on then. Item seven is unfinished business, and this is discuss the village board list of priorities. Cue man.
You want to make a pen.
Yeah, yes.
I was trying to connect with one of our consultants here. So here's a memo in the packet outlining the priority number two, which was about So here's a memo in the packet outlining the priority number two, which was about, it had to do about housing, affordable housing. Board members had, you know, various definitions or submissions for that category, which can be found on page two. We currently have several single family, several class that are featuring single family, both in works and, that are current and potentially moving forward here soon. And then there's a couple proposed mixed use projects that include multifamily housing, one being market rate and one being various levels of affordability that are geared towards, specifically to people with disabilities and veterans. So that's kind of the, the landscape right now. And then staff's also already on an update to the comprehensive plan with the Plan Commission. And that should be wrapping up here in the coming months. And then also attending Santa Day County Housing Summit here in October. So those are the things that we have going on. And if there's other ideas that, that you guys would like to pursue that we could look into in the future and try to incorporate into staff performance reviews as goals, we can look at that or if there's anything that you'd like to bring up in the more near term that we could put in the future agenda? Or just any general discussion that you'd like to have?
Well, I appreciate your, the updates that you, like, you send out. That's really, really helpful because there's a lot of time that I'm sitting here, you know, home, whatever, thinking, well, about this area we annexed and what's happening there. And it's, it's huge number, for example, what's kind of moving in that direction, what's happening there? And when you send those out, that's really helpful. So keeping up with that is really, really good.
I think we have a lot of really exciting projects coming up that are, you know, moving toward these goals, which I think is great. And laying out the comprehensive plan changes, I think, is important, too. So then it's kind of out there, what areas we're expecting, certain things, just so it's probably known to any developers or, you know, residents, anyone who's interested in what we're doing in the future. So I think that update's really important.
I have a sense of really wrapping up the coverage of the plan update.
Yeah, the Plan Commission just approved an updated schedule that we're wrapping up in October.
October, yeah.
So there's, like, an open house or something, right? With that, is that something that...
Yeah, we're looking at doing that a couple of weeks, August twenty-first. Finalize the time, but I think it'll be here at six-thirty, six-thirty to eight-thirty.
Yeah.
Some of the staff in the Regional Plan Commission is going to come and help out with that as well. We have some little models and things they can help us out with. Then the next step after that would be the Plan Commission approving a public hearing draft, and we post the necessary notices. We have to send them out to various entities for their opportunism to come in. I guess October will be the goal.
Okay.
Do you literally know how many residential building permits have been issued this year? Second part of that, is there more that we all collectively are we doing to maybe help the developers along with, just like, Jeff alluded to, we have a number of projects that are listed here in various phases, but it just doesn't seem like too much earth being moved for residential housing, right? Less than ten, I think.
Ten, huh?
Yeah. This year. As far as, I think it's just being clear in our intentions in the, in the comp plan and then just trying to have a smooth of a process through staff review and various committees and Plan Commission and Board.
Well, I'm pretty happy with how things are proceeding regarding housing. Considering last year, we didn't have a lot going on, and this year, now we have a lot of projects. So I think we're going in the right step.
And the next, the next topic is, for next meeting is, our recreation open space was the category.
Yes, one other thing, you're asking what you could do. Sometimes there's a pushback on multifamily or affordables, I think. Kind of educating people you talk to about the need for it throughout the county and, and here.
On that topic, there was the individual that runs the townhouses, I rest, right down, the storage units. He's step by marketplace days, and he's having a difficult time filling those. And he said it's between three and four hundred dollars a unit per month less than what he lists in Madison and Middleton. So just kind of a comment that, I don't know, there's anyone that we can put him in contact with that are advertised or promote throughout the village, but there's some what I would consider market value or affordable housing that's certainly vacant right now.
Yeah, because there's quite a few. I was just talking with a professional yesterday that graduated, got a degree and was looking to want to move into a community outside of Madison. They were asking me about Cottage Grove, and then he said that, like, oh, I didn't think about that place. We're out here.
Anything else, Matt?
That's it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. And moving on to new business, and this is discussing, consider canceling the Village Board meeting on September second. Obviously, with the holiday and everything, they'll bring around there. Folks probably trying to do the last push of school shopping or trying to get a little R and R. I think that will also depend, Matt, I talked about this, on what exactly is queued up for the board. So we may have to grab another meeting if we've got some things that are priorities. But as of right now, it looks like the way things are lining up, we won't necessarily need that meeting.
Probably a long meeting, the second meeting in September, but...
Just typical anyway.
Yeah.
Any other concerns about that? Folks want to be here on Labor Day?
Should we do a motion to table it at this point, to talk about more at next one? Or next meeting?
Well, either want to make a decision tonight or, or table it. Well, I, I...
Yeah, I don't want it.
My, my suggestion would be, I mean, there's, I, I don't think anyone's looking to meet on Labor Day, so I think canceling the meeting, from my perspective, is okay. And then, and then, we would, I mean, John and I would work on scheduling a special meeting if we need to.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we cancel the meeting on September second, two thousand and nineteen.
Motion second, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. Item eighty is discuss and consider operator license, applications for licensing year of July twenty nineteen through June twenty twenty for Ryan, Joseph, Delilah, Richard, Kelly, Brenda, and Skylar.
Matt, any issues?
None.
You had seen it back there.
I just noted that some of them said there's no recent issues and others said just no issues. So the ones that said no recent issues, they might have had something in the past.
In the past, yeah, but they don't fall within the guidelines that you guys have given us to deny them.
I'll make a motion to approve the operator license permit applications for licensing in the year July twenty nineteen, June twenty twenty for Ryan, Joseph, Delilah, Richard, Kelly, Brenda, and Skylar.
Second. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. All right. The next is reports from Village Boards and Commissions and Committees. The Distilling folks have been sitting here very patiently. If you guys don't mind, can we move the Plan Commission out?
Yeah, go ahead.
Probably still building something in that, in that shot of progress.
Wires are in there, basically.
So if we, we do that, then Plan Commission, again, we had a public hearing, Dundee's Distilling for a conditional use permit. We had consideration for allowing a conditional permit, allowing indoor commercial entertainment, i.e. tasting room, to slightly exceed the twenty-five percent that the Plan Commission set up to thirty-five percent of the space. Then we carried on with interesting concept, concept plan for moving out in the space of north side of West Cottage Grove, Court Crossing, Sand Pepper. As mentioned earlier, again, this is a transition residential for veterans as well as those with disabilities. So I think favorably from the Plan Commission, at least at this point, and we'll see those folks come back hopefully very soon. And then we had a concept, another concept presentation from Craig Frank on property of the southwest corner of Gaston Road and Highway N. Again, I think favorable from the Plan Commission perspective, and we expect to see, hopefully, him back as well. That was a mixed use property in that corner. And then we, again, recovered some of the comprehensive plan adjustments for that. And again, these will pass through the Plan Commission, will come up a little bit later. Anything listed to add or... Okay. So then we have to discuss and consider requests from Dundee's Distilling for conditional use permit to allow indoor entertainment land use, i.e. tasting room exceeding twenty-five percent of the floor area on Three Hundred Progress Drive. Any comments, discussions, and that from the board?
Yeah, and the main reason why we went to thirty-five percent was because in the future, they're discussing of having a mezzanine for additional spaces, bathrooms. And the, the manufacturing area is separated from the tasting room by a wall, like, that's per state statutes.
Yeah.
So they really couldn't get any bigger than that anyway. So that way, going to the thirty-five percent allows them to not have to come back for another conditional use permit and gives us a way to cap them from getting bigger without coming back.
Thank you. Any questions for...
So if they decide to, you know, construct an outdoor facility, because I think that might be in the future, and if it exceeds the thirty-five percent, then they would have to come back for an additional conditional use, or is that separate?
One of the, one of the conditions, condition number two, was that any outdoor requirements could be subject to, uh, conditional use? The owners of the company out here, if there's questions, you're up for it.
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit to allow an indoor commercial entertainment land use not to exceed thirty-five percent of the total space at Three Hundred Progress Drive with the conditions noted in the Village Action Report.
I'll second.
Motion second, any further discussion? Having heard none, then all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries.
Can bring the samples.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
Marketplace days.
I plan to ferment some rum. Where's that?
We'll wait for the ribbon cutting and taste coming to be over. Otherwise, you can purchase it at pig.
Thanks for sitting here.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Then we'll move back up to the top to Peer Court Steering Committee.
So we met, and it was, it was a very interesting meeting because Jaykeeper and Sierra were there from Briar Patch, and they are discussing some changes as to how Peer Court is going to be, is going to be run, or at least what they want to see happen. They're, they're kind of taking a model that they've used in other communities that's becoming more and more restorative justice and being more of like a round table, a circle of peers, instead of this whole idea of a, you know, peer court judging kind of situation. So it was really a neat meeting to talk, get an idea for what they're, they're thinking about doing with these changes. But one of the suggestions we had was to have Briar Patch come, to have them come and, and to a board meeting and explain to us exactly what those changes look like, give us the opportunity to ask those questions to them. And then, obviously, it would come down to our, the Village Board decision anyways on whether we'd want Peer Court to just kind of have the model that it's always had. There were quite a few questions from, from, from Mark and Katie, and, you know, we had some discussion on what it would look like. I think they had so much representation from, from the group there in order to answer questions, because they knew that there would be, like, a little bit of a pushback. So I do believe we're looking at in sometime this month, if, if, you know, one of these future meetings to have Briar Patch come and answer those questions.
Hey, Jeff, other question. The data were talked about referrals. What does PPA stand for? They make up almost half of their referrals.
It's kind of some area.
PPA? So it's Ella Drive, Cottage Grove, Oregon, PPA, Rimrocks, Sunquerry, Trinity?
PPA, I don't know what that would be. We could ask, like, an area or a municipality or something.
I'm just, if you, it sounds like they've tried to implement the restorative justice circles in other...
Yes.
Places, and I'm wondering, we're the second largest referring municipality to them.
We are, yeah.
So I'm wondering which other are on this list have done it, and if we could get any insight from those municipalities.
Yes, and that's why we, we suggested having them come to this, to one of our meetings so we can get some of those questions answered and figure out, you know, what changes would it really mean to our community. Personally, on a personal level, I think it's a neat idea. I like the idea that it's not necessarily just handing down a judgment to somebody, but actually getting youth involved in the sense of why, why is this behavior predominantly happening in my life? And how can I change it? How does it affect other people? Because I think a lot of times offenders don't really ever put two and two together, say, this can affect somebody else, and just kind of gets them involved in the whole restorative justice, instead of just saying, well, here's your judgment. Write a letter to your parents saying sorry, do some community service, and you learn your lesson, so.
Do you know how they recruit youth to be part of the program?
Be part of the juror part?
Yeah.
Well, I know that, I know that Monona Grove, the, the actual school system does a little bit of that, where they, you know, it's, it's out there, they can go ahead and if they want to sign up to be a juror, a peer court.
I think the, a major way is, it's often one of the consequences that the kids...
Right.
Have to serve. They say it, like, give to be juror two times, or...
Yeah, my, my daughter went through Peer Court, and they asked her to do that, yes.
And then sometimes they stay on because they find it intriguing.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And then, you know, one of the things that we've, it's been an ongoing discussion, really wasn't brought up too much at that meeting, but I think we need to really look into it as the whole traffic violation situation, because it's not necessarily, that won't go any further, but I think it's a discussion we need to have, you know, is that something that's really that important to be in the peer court system? Does it fit there? Does it even fit there?
I, I think that that's one of the things that we have to, as you're talking about these new possibilities, that's going to be affected in the contract. We're also in the process of trying to deal with some of those issues already, so that then this comes up for discussion at the end of the year, like we always do. That, that would be clarified.
So we pay them on a per, a per referral basis?
Do we pay...
Briar Patch?
I don't know how that works.
It's an annual.
I don't think so.
No, it's an annual, yeah.
For as many...
It's not like...
As many referrals as we want to give them.
Or whatever it was, it's divided between the couple.
The one thing about Cottage Grove, about Monona, or Cottage Grove in general, is that we do have a lot of people, when they, when they refer to actually go through the program, whereas some communities, they can have, like, eighteen referrals, only ten of them actually show up and, you know. So that's a good thing. I mean, I think it makes our community show that we're really interested in, in helping kids make it through some of this, this rougher time of life, that they're interested in participating too.
I think it's a good discussion, and if Jay's able to make it to a future meeting, maybe if one of the topics, if he can address how many other municipalities or areas in Peer Court use traffic violations as part of the process.
We're already collecting that time.
So where will that be discussed at a board meeting here before the end of the year?
My, the first thing I would go, I would do is go to, to committee and kind of share that and see if, if, if they have questions or if they agree with it. We tried to clarify that in a previous contract, and apparently there's some leeway or some question as to what applies and what doesn't, so we want to get that cleared up.
But in the end, isn't it really the judge who says you should go to Peer Court or not? So it's really Briar Patch would have to clarify it with, but rather than municipal judge?
Uh, yes, I would say, is that, I want to make sure that it's clarified with everybody.
Anything else, Jeff?
Nope.
All right, then next is Deer Grove EMS Commission.
We met Thursday eighteenth, July eighteenth. The association received a check from the Alliance Energy Foundation, hometown safety grant of a thousand dollars. Calls for the month were slightly down, same for the year. Did the chief's six-month review, and we're gonna start talking budgets at the next meeting. Our next meeting's in Deerfield on August fifteenth at six-thirty.
Do you know what they're planning on doing with the thousand dollars?
What?
What, what's the thousand-dollar grant gonna be used for? Do they know?
We haven't, we haven't tagged it towards anything at this point. They haven't, I should say.
Right. And also with the ride-along policy, is it just being updated, or is that what you guys looked at, the ride-along policy?
It was just more of a, a general discussion and changing a couple of minor things in there that someone, you know, signed an agreement that they can't, you know, HIPAA requirements, things like that. It's just a standard, almost a waiver, if someone's under the age of eighteen, make sure a parent or guardian signs it. It's really, the, the design of this would be to have someone that may be interested in going into paramedic service, to have them experience that. With that being said, they're not gonna be, you know, thrown into a bad situation, so.
And the, the difference between the old one and the new one, is the new one has a number nine.
Oh.
And the number nine is what is new language in there around expected professional attire.
For the ride-alonger?
For the ride-alonger. And we did establish that there shall be no guns.
Oh, that's good. That's good.
Are there a lot of people that want to ride along, or?
I don't know where there's a whole lot of doing, actually.
Apparently, it's usually the people who are applying to be a volunteer.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right. Next is Park Recs and Forest Street committee.
Hi, we met way back on July eighteenth, and we had a nice presentation from someone at an organization, it's a nonprofit in Cambridge called the Cambridge Tree Project, and that organization actually donates all of the trees that are planted in the Village of Cambridge, in the village property, and it's funded by residents purchasing trees in Cambridge through this project. So they're trying to promote diversity of tree species throughout the community, which, you know, we're, we're going ahead to do the tree inventory, so kind of looking at what our makeup of tree species is across the village, and just kind of giving us some ideas of maybe how we could increase diversity to reduce impact of any future, you know, bug or disease that a tree could get. So that was an interesting presentation. We also will hear more about some improvement fees in a future meeting here. Then we talked about Monona Grove youth soccer. Of course, there's never quite enough space, because there are so many activities that the youth are involved in in Cottage Grove, so MG Soccer, youth soccer is looking to use the green space next to the Municipal Services Building for practices. They would set up their own goals, it's not for games, it's just for practice, to have extra space for that.
Is that property owned by the village?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
So the, the committee voted to recommend that we let MG Youth Soccer use that space. They'd be responsible for setting up their goals and taking it down between seasons, so the goals aren't there, you know, year-round. So that's something we can consider here shortly. I don't know, Sean, did you have anything else to add from our meeting? I think that pretty much covers most of it.
What's the update on the B houses?
We're still in negotiation.
Don't get stung. You don't want to get stung. I have a question, Sean. Is there now, or has there been an agreement between the schools and the village in terms of the use of those fields, of the soccer fields?
Just the, the agreement that goes back that they get first choice of parking and also use those two facilities for soccer.
Is that the school or the Monona Grove club?
Officially, that would be the school. The club does not have an agreement like that.
But it's the club that's asking to use the green space?
Correct.
Does that use for anything else currently?
Well, and it's for little ones that they want to put there, it's not, you know, eighteen girls, it's little ones, so. I know it is not, we just want.
I have one question, where, where does the committee sit with the, the impact fees for parks? Just looking at the June meeting, it looked like a motion was made and seconded, but then everyone voted against it.
So we originally looked at just the park development improvement fees, and we didn't consider the, the fee in lieu of parkland, and we wanted to kind of put something together about all of the fees in general, instead of kind of piecing in a recommendation. Yep. So if you turn the last page in the packet about the parks is the recommendation for Monona Grove Youth Soccer, so if you can follow along there. So I'll make a motion to allow Monona Grove Youth Soccer Club to use the green space next to the Municipal Services Building, and to allow the placement of temporary goals, which are to be removed at the end of each season.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's motion second. Any further discussion?
Is there any sort of liability that the village takes on, that it's not park space?
I was just asking, I was just gonna ask a question like that, John. Do they provide insurance?
They do.
So I think we'd want to make sure that we have proof of that insurance with us named as a, named insured.
So I'll amend my motion that we direct staff to make sure to collect that insurance information if we don't have it already.
Hang on, a second.
Okay.
Add that to my second.
Any further discussion then? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. All right, Nat Pig.
So it was a record six-minute meeting, it was probably the shortest one we've, we've had, because there was no monitoring results this, this time around, so it was just looking at the bills from Strand. Both of those bills were well in line with what the budget is, and one of the things we did discuss, I think it might have been John here, John Russell, that brought it up, is that we are right in line this year with the budget, so there really are no issues on our end. Next meeting is, I know we kind of went back and forth, was it the, I should have wrote that down, sorry.
Yeah, because we're in the budget season, so
Yeah.
we normally meet before joint fire. I think, yeah, I got September twenty-third as well.
Twenty-third, September, yeah, that's right. At six o'clock.
That'll be joint fire as well, yeah, we're gonna push.
And we're actually gonna do, it's actually gonna be that, that meeting we're gonna do from six to seven, so that, you know, because we're gonna start, look, we're gonna do budget that, that night, and then have the fire start at seven that night, so that way it's back to back.
All right, then joint fire.
I was there on behalf of Melissa.
She didn't know she had to take notes.
And I didn't know I had to take the minutes.
I told you.
I just forgot. I forgot, okay. So, but pretty, probably, I guess, typical meeting, I would guess. They've decided to replace some of the lamps with LED lights in the building. They're discussing some additional security lighting, and so we're gonna contract with Accurate Electric Construction to work on that in the center of the parking spaces. We talked about the brush truck, which came up at our joint town board meeting, town village meeting, and so the decision was to include that in the discussion around the budget. The talk is, though, to use the monies from Pleasant Springs contract. They decided it's most likely not in our best interest to have it be a rapid-response truck, as the cost for that would put it well over a hundred fifty thousand dollars, which is way more than what the money is that we would have available, and the use of it, it would be heavy and other things, others who are there. Do you want to chime in on those thoughts? We talked about the, the phone system, network infrastructure, internet. Charter had been out to do some reparations, and so the internet issues have not seemed to have been a problem, and the phone system is tied to the town's phone system, so that will also be part of the budget twenty-twenty discussion, once the town discusses further what they're planning to do with their phone system.
Were they able to figure out the extra line or the answering?
There was no discussion of that.
Okay.
But part of that is that because the town hall phone system would have to be upgraded, I think, at the same time as the joint fire, or the fire department, so that's why it's kind of on the town at this point, and what they're gonna do with that, once they get the decision and put it in their budget for next year, then they'll have an answer.
And then the final discussion was, at one of the last meetings, the committee had asked the chief to look at security cameras and card badge readers for access into the building. After discussion, they felt like the card reader system is more important than the security video monitoring system, so if we were gonna invest in something, it would be that. And so that will also be part of the consideration for the twenty-twenty budget. Next meeting is September twenty-third at seven PM.
Thank you, Sarah.
Next is Law Enforcement Committee. I'll defer either to John or Sarah, because you guys were there as well, cover that.
What's the question?
Just, just a quick review of Law Enforcement Committee.
Seems so good. Law is being enforced?
Great job, man.
So Chief Labor talked about considering a police department fitness wellness program for twenty-twenty. It cannot be a mandatory program for all the, the police officers, but he's obviously done some studies with fitness and wellness, produce a more proactive and just, you know, happy, happy workforce. There was some discussion around there about maybe looking at local businesses and then at village-wide for staff and other departments to participate, and he was gonna bring back some potential costs associated with that at the next meeting as we start to prepare for the budget. We got an update regarding fireworks, and complaints and citations, I think, were near nothing this year, thanks in part to probably the signs being posted, we have no firework sales within the village.
So there were not very many?
Not very many, no.
There were a lot of fireworks.
There were a lot of fireworks. I thought, I don't know. But not a lot of complaints is kind of what
Yeah.
was down to. Okay.
Yeah, the past years, it was like a war zone around here.
For like two weeks.
Yeah, it wasn't, yeah, it was better. Exactly. It was, it wasn't just the fourth, it was like a month and a half of fireworks.
Maybe it's just because I'm a dog owner now, that I pay more attention to it.
And then we received the chief's report, department activity, detectives' report, the canine report, so that was it.
And Matt and Chief are talking about the wellness program, or it connected the two of them on that, from all village-wide, so good to that. And that's part of their strategic overall plan to consider that for the department, so that's why it's being considered, as well as, you know, ensuring.
And our next meeting is August twenty-seventh.
Okay. Then Ordinance Review Committee, John.
Okay, so we met last week on Wednesday, and we talked about our review strategy for reviewing ordinances, because we assign chapters to everyone. So as we worked through those chapters, we decided we're gonna kind of categorize any changes we might want to recommend to the board, either in minor changes or more of a major change, just so we could, the board could work through prioritizing any of those changes that we would recommend. So we're gonna compile a whole list and then bring all of those forward, so we can see what all of the changes are, and then how we might want to work through that list, if we want to go ahead with that. And we also recommended for budget time that we think a slight increase up to ten thousand would be something the committee would be interested in looking at, and that would cover, you know, some amount of changes that we might see. And we also talked about the form that we approved last time around, if that's to use, for use by a resident, if they want to see an ordinance changed, that instead of waiting for that to go to Ordinance Review Committee, which may not meet for a month, or especially over the holidays, that that should come to the Village Board, we think, and then it could get routed either back to the Ordinance Review Committee or to the committee that would kind of handle that ordinance, rather than wait for it to go to Ordinance Review, and then back to the board, and then back to another committee. It could be, you know, four months before the actual applicable committee saw the form, so, just to kind of save time and streamline things, we thought those forms should come here.
Every time, even if like ordinance review, like just for consistency?
Yeah, for consistency, and I don't think we were expecting that many residents to fill out those forms, so I don't think it should be a large burden that it would come here for direction. Then, am I missing anything else?
We talked about the external form, and then we're gonna have an internal form for our review, any sort of edits, so we can kind of track metrics on, you know, the importance of what has actually been done at the end of the year. And we do have a document, document that actually shows, you know, who presented it, you know, what date, and what was it changed.
Heidi, is the, will the board use the request form as well?
I guess you could use the request form to lay out, you know, make sure you're answering all of the questions before you bring it forward for discussion, so just to make sure you've gathered all the information needed before
It might be helpful just to keep track of what, who's making
Yep.
You made reference to an internal form, so you're gonna adjust it slightly for staff?
Yeah, so the staff has
Staff and board.
You know, if we do submit it to the board, and we decide to, you know, ask the year or whoever to update it, or some sort of documentation that goes with it.
Our next meeting date is tentatively set for August twenty-eighth at five-thirty. I know there's some Plan Commission things that could come up then, so, and Alex is on, so that's our tentative next meeting date.
I guess twentieth?
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth, oh.
We meet early though, at five-thirty, so.
Yeah.
Oh, right.
All right, next is Emergency Government Committee.
All right, so we just met last week, and a couple of new and exciting things is that we have an email address now for the Emergency Government Committee, and I will get that to you, Lisa, so you can put it in the minutes correctly. I don't wanna, I don't have it right in front of me, so I don't want to get it wrong. And so that also comes with Office three sixty-five, so we'll be able to store our documents and our contacts and all of our pieces of
our contacts and all of our pieces of, that we need on that SharePoint. That's exciting. We still have about thirteen hundred dollars left in our budget after we purchased a new computer. We did review the draft emergency plan for extreme weather events, made some edits, and then, um, I'm working on re, uh, drafting the overall emergency plan, and we'll include those edits of the extreme temperatures in as an appendix into that. Uh, so we were gonna discuss that in the September meeting, it may be in the October meeting, we'll see how far along I can get on that. Um, there was some discussion about sending a letter to local businesses, asking them for their various emergency plans, so, um, possibly working with the Chamber of Commerce and Paula to, to do that, so we'll look at that. There was, in general, a request, uh, from a member of the committee for us as the village to consider appointing an additional citizen member in addition to the two we have. We each have two, or we each have one, excuse me, the village has one, and the town has one, and then there's one village board member and one town board member.
So you're saying add one from each?
That's what they're suggesting. Um, so I don't know, we can, if you wanna put that in the next meeting, so we can discuss and consider, if you wanna do that.
We have to change the ordinance.
Yeah.
Right, exactly. I mean, it would.
Although it already needs updating.
Right. So, um, I'm not sure if you want, how you wanna handle that one.
What is the purpose of the additional citizen members from the town and village?
My understanding is, um, thought process that if an emergency were to happen, we, it would be helpful to have more hands on deck.
Might help with the forum, too, occasionally, it's can be a, yeah, struggle sometimes.
With only four people.
Yeah.
I, I don't have a strong feeling one way or another, so.
I, I, I don't know, I guess my experience, and I'm no longer on the committee, but, you know, I, I think, have everybody's gonna be on the committee ever show up in an emergency is probably highly unlikely, 'cause it would just happen during the day versus at night. I also think that there's gonna be support from both village staff and town staff, um, you know, depending on what the emergency is and that kind of thing, that I guess I don't know if there's a necessity for.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if we have anybody, John, waiting desperately to get onto another committee from our citizenship of Cottage Grove, but.
Try to rope some people in.
I agree with what Troy was saying, I think the, you know, the main duties of the committee, um, there may be some declaration aspects, but it's really putting the plan and policies together, and then it's gonna, it's gonna be the emergency services and other staff that if something ever happens, will have to step in with, you know, and then, you know, with some guidance from, from those folks, but likely the, um, likely whoever the chair is of the department, and then the head of, you know, whoever the chief elected official is for each municipality, so. Yeah, so anyway, I, I don't know if there's, from a, from a standpoint of more hands on deck, I don't, if that's the reason, I don't think it's probably necessary from that standpoint.
Because again, that's the role for the committee, it's just to be a support for the field folks, and it's not like they're, you know, controlling the operation of whatever's going on, so I, I think it may just muddy the water a little bit, that you're gonna have, you know, a, a lot of chiefs, or a lot of chiefs know Indians there to, you know what I mean? Probably a bad thing to say. Lee, go ahead, John.
No. You know where you were going with that.
You know what I mean, it just, you know, but that's, that they feel like they need to do, you know?
Would we have a concern if the town had an additional citizen member they wanted to appoint and we didn't?
Oh, we'd wanna, I think you'd wanna match it up appropriately, so it's a.
If one of the citizen members doesn't feel like they can make it, like, if they, if they just want extra people there, or if they're just ready to not be there all the time, like, that's a different thing.
And, and, uh, this was raised by the board member of the town, so the ci, the citizen representatives have been there faithfully, my.
Yeah, they have.
Two meetings I've been there, so. Um, so should I, it sounds like, um, we don't feel that it's necessary from the village perspective?
I don't, I'm hearing it. And again, unless the town wants to go that way, then certainly we wanna match that, so it's an even, uh, committee from that perspective, so it's, could be an item we talk about at our next joint town-village.
I think we oughta give some weight to, to somebody's actually been on the committee, and, you know, who says, well, I don't know, you know, adding something's gonna really help us also.
So suggestion to put it on the joint village-town?
That's what I jotted down to do to have.
And that will happen this month, at August, right? Or is it September?
September, I think, is the next one.
What's the, um, reason that they said they have another, like, just extra?
More hands on deck in the case of an emergency. So. Um, and then, just a couple of the other quick things, um, does, if anybody here has the web EOC password, you have any password to put in the call-out? You don't have to say it now, if you have it, but, um.
I have one.
You've got it? Okay.
I mean, I.
You have one. You have yours.
It's mine. Well, you have to apply for it, basically, yes, I, I have one.
Okay, all right.
You know, it has to go back to the, my village Gmail and all that.
Okay, all right, I'll check.
But you can apply for one.
Yeah.
Anybody can apply for one that's on the committee.
Okay, perfect, thank you, that, I believe, is it?
Um, next is reports from village officers. We have Attorney Lee Boucher, legal briefings and status updates.
Um, I would, we're gonna be entering a period in the next month where we have a number of developer agreements, um, that are being pulled together. One thing that I will do for next time is have a, uh, draft outline of a developer agreement, just so you have one that you can take a look at, and you get an idea of what's, what's in them, but they really do control in many ways the development, so we'll be, be working on those as a staff, and that'll be where my focus will be.
Lisa, update on social media and website.
Um, we have a memo and a chart, I guess, pie chart of, um, the activities on Facebook and some Pocoh data. Um, I did attend a webinar, uh, last week through Pocoh, they are updating, um, their site, they're calling it Pocoh 2.0, um, which will give us, um, an enhanced dashboard, um, which will give us more analyticals of some of the questions and data that we, um, gather from the polls or the surveys. Um, it will also give us ideas on, um, how to do more outreach for our, um, community, and ideas of what we can do to get more people involved. And they're also, um, enhancing the arrangement of survey questions. Um, Erin, I think that might be helpful for you, um, with some of the plan commission, 'cause you can organize them a little bit better. Um, and just a reminder that we do have a binder and booklet in, in the office of all the questions and the reports, if anybody's ever interested in anything, we certainly can get that out to you. Um, I think the memo pretty much gives you some of the, the data, I think, uh, we've stepped it up this last year, as you can see from the, the pie charts of where we've improved and, you know, just a little over the years, so, um, it's been good. If anybody has any questions, I can certainly try and answer them.
The links are pretty impressive from this year to last year.
Right, exactly.
See that comparison, and the reach?
Yeah, that's pretty cool.
Yeah, I appreciate all you've done with that, Lisa.
It's been a joint effort. Um, I, I send out a calendar to everybody, and so, um, everybody has inputs, it's not just me.
Who's everybody, you mean all departments?
Departments, yeah. Yep, well, uh, well, Sean has his, his own page for Parks and Rec, and the PD does as well, so it's the rest of us that.
Do you want one, too, JJ?
We have the Malibu's.
Yeah.
Now it's a throw-down.
I, I, I'm just curious, are we looking at any of the other social media outlets, like Instagram?
Well, actually, that's interesting, because we did put a Pocoh question out on, um, what people use as their resources, and I was shocked that it was overwhelmingly our website is where they go. Um, so, but, and we certainly can.
No, I'm not suggesting we need to, I just was curious.
It, it, it's, um, I'll tell you, it's a lot of work to keep it up, um, and, but we've found that the calendar postings, I think, is our, our way to do it, so I'll usually go in, you know, weeks ahead of the time, and post whatever I can think of that we need to, and then obviously JJ's excellent about, um, getting information out there as needed, as we do, you know, if anything comes up, but we try to have it scheduled at least a month and a half advance, and that way we have to change anything or edit anything we can, but that is helpful, and that has helped tremendously to get, um, a lot of information out there and keep people involved, and keep it current.
And since a lot of this has been, you know, added on, uh, other duties as assigned, sort of, sort of things, I think we wanna be, you know, if we're gonna add on, you know, much more, it's gonna get to a point where I think, and we, and we may get to that size of a community where we wanna have a public relations or marketing type position, and then I think we could really expand that, but we're probably not quite to that, that level yet, and, um, I think communities our size, what, what we're doing with social media is pretty significant, so.
Yeah, that's the feedback, I sit on an advisory board, um, for the Wisconsin Election Commission, and we're looking at communication, obviously, and so I've had a lot of communities ask me, can you, um, what, what do you do for your Facebook page? And I'm like, well, here you go, and so they look at it, and I've gotten feedback, they're like, this is great, so it's good to hear.
Have you gotten any feedback regarding our website, like, are people finding it easy enough to use?
Um, I don't get a whole lot of feedback, but I don't also get anything that says, well, I can't ever find this. Um, we try, uh, to keep it, um, as current as we possibly can, and we try to, if we can, link it to, like, certain pages, like, to, just today, we updated Clean Sweep, um, we noticed that we had some outdated information, so we linked right to their page where it didn't have a link before, and I think that's helpful for people, 'cause it's just a clip.
Yeah.
And we like to start marketing push to, um, let people know that they can sign up for alerts, that so they can get, they can get a text when a particular agenda, or I think even by topic.
Yes, they can, and it's, as I put in the memo, if you look, we do have significant increase of people that are subscribed to our website that receive those notifications, and they can pick and choose what they wanna receive.
And also reminding people that they can, all the information that you guys get for Plan Commission and Board are also available for anyone else to see the, the materials, too.
I found it very helpful, now that, um, with the, all the different committees' agendas, all the packet information is included, so I appreciate that, too.
Yeah, I agree, that if I come to another meeting to see the packet, I think that's helpful.
Yeah, another level of transparency, and information is good.
There's a Public Relations Committee, too, that, I mean, we're authorized by ordinance to, um, maybe help assist with social media and communication with the, um, public in general, that might be able to help the board, as well as staff, with, you know, the additional duties as assigned, and you get a bit more sure of people, and maybe different ideas or options to get the word out.
You are even resharing, you know, as board members, we can reshare village posts and increase the reach even more?
Yeah, that's what we try to, you know, like, I try to go in, and if the PD has something, I will, you know, share it or like it, same with Parks and Rec, just because it's another level, you, you may hit a few more people.
All right. Good stuff. Uh, next is Communication, Mislane's Business. Yeah, we consider approval of vouchers. Any questions, comments on the vouchers this time through?
Do we use credit cards at all to get rewards?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And then, what, um, what drinking fountains were broken?
There are two at our municipal service building, the first in the main entrance, and then the one near our offices, that a lot of the folks who take them, they just courses seem to use, were constantly paying, um, and we are building a fund in the capital plan, which is under budget for the year, we're all done with our projects, so we've got those drinking fountain replaced, and they also have the bottle filters.
I have, actually, go real quick. Repair, uh, the cooling wires for this building? Are we doing anything to try to prevent that? 'Cause I understand that's happened a couple times.
That's, I believe, believe that the municipal service building.
It's here, I think.
Oh, was it these?
What?
Believe so.
What page is it on?
It's on, uh, page one, BDS Mechanical.
No, that was over the municipal service building. Um, I believe that's one of the things, uh, I'm not sure if it's a grid or choose my.
Oh.
But, but here we're talking about maybe a trail cam or something like that.
Yeah, 'cause we've had issues here, that's why I thought it was here.
Yeah.
Sorry. And then the only other question I have is graffiti removal. I was just curious where that was at, was that?
That's the water tower up by the interstate, it was actually tagged, uh, that's here, uh, I had it ten months ago. We tried, our staff tried different chemicals, pressure washer, different things, reached out to, I believe it was four different companies, heard back to two, only one extra came and gave me a price, but they did a great job.
Where did they get it? Or did they take it?
There's a, and you can't really see it unless you go out there, and there's big retaining walls, and they used some really good paint, and did a lot, um, and we couldn't make a dent in any of it, so we had to bring in more materials.
Was there just lighting, um, to light Cottage Grove? Is it going to be lit at all down there, too?
Yep, that was just another plus of that whole project, just point one down that way, give your folks.
Second.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes, abstain, motion carries. Uh, item B is correspondence. I didn't receive anything. Item C is upcoming community events.
BBJ's open cutting tomorrow morning at eleven?
Yeah. We had the garage sale this last week, it was, we're driving all around, so I think it went well. Hopefully got some good buys. Anything else from anybody? Some are low. All right, um, future agenda items, item D, we have our.
Did you have your meeting with Mayor Satie?
She got stuck in New York and still waiting to reschedule, so it's up to her and it. There's been a few other things that happened in Madison right after that, of course, that I think Cottage Grove is probably well done on this at this point, um, but no, unfortunately not, she got detained there.
Did I, um, imagine seeing something about listening sessions on the agenda, or, or is that something we wanna discuss at future meeting, or?
We?
Well, um, Jeff had asked about that, and about creating a, a listening session, um, on, as a, as an agenda item, and, um, I responded to him, I said, well, here, I think that there are some issues with that, like open meeting issues, um, and, um, the, if you recall, a couple of years ago, there was an Attorney General's opinion that there used to be, at the end of each meeting, each of the trustees would give a report, and then the Attorney General came out with an opinion on that and said, you know, that's not specific enough, and so we tried to cut back on that, and we had each of the, if the trustee was gonna bring something up, they needed to tell us ahead of time, and then, um, that was the first attempt to kind of do away with that. to kind of do away with that. And then now we've done away with it. And I think that puts us in better compliance with, with the open meeting law. I, I just raised some issues on the logistics of it and that's why Jeff decided to pull it.
Okay. As maybe I can ask this separate, if it has to be an agenda item or something? Like if we wanted to go out and meet with a, like as a individual trustee to talk to constituents, you know, like how if we go door to door, whatever we would do to talk to residents.
See, I don't think that that's an issue, Heidi, because the thing would be like if you would say, well, at four o'clock in the afternoon, I'm gonna have this listening session in my house or wherever. And then you run into some, again, records or type of thing. You gotta make, are there, are there gonna be, is there gonna be a quorum of the board there? I mean, this is really just more preventative and just to say to you, okay, it's, it's one of those things that seems like a great idea, but then when you get into logistics of it, it's a little more difficult as well.
But individually, we can hold one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Particularly around the campaign and.
But, and again, Jeff, I think you have to be careful of that in, in the sense of, you know, you're in one of those meetings and they, you know, they ask you a question and, you know, you find yourself in a situation where they say, well, Jeff says that, you know, the, we can buy all the dump trucks we want. And, you know, we come back and we say, well, gee, I don't think that's exactly what Jeff said. And so, you know, you run into some of, some of those issues. So, I mean, we do offer people the opportunity at the beginning of the meeting that it's open to the public to bring things up. But even there, there's some constraints on, you know, what can we answer back. And so I, I did kind of a informal, as part of coming up with a reaction to that, talked to some other municipal attorneys and, you know, they, their municipalities have not done that as well and they thought that the reasoning that I had used made sense.
All right. Any other future agenda items other than, you know, the usual suspects as well as beginning to start trumping down the road of budget real quick?
Briar Patch.
Briar Patch, yes.
What is our next step with the presentation on the solar?
This is just one vendor, right?
One vendor. It was in, it's been in utilities, kicked around there. Public Works had a little snippet, but we didn't get a lot of detail. It's probably more of a question of whether or not we want to prioritize it in budget consideration because it is an expense. And then deciding whether or not the, the payback is there, which, you know, again, I think utilities went through a number of different scenarios. Potentially looks like, again, if you can get some grants and things of that nature, it's from, you know, it'd be great for having field trips for the local kids to come and look at something like that to see, you know, green in action. So there's a lot of pluses to it, but again, the board really needs to consider it because it's, it's gonna be a fairly sizable investment. Again, with payback, but again, that paybacks in the future, we have that to consider.
And so do we consider that later on in the year? Do we bring it back to utilities?
I knew, I threw it out, sustainability is a general category when I threw priorities in there, but I think, I don't think it got a lot of, it wasn't high on the list.
I think as a group, when you have, when you have a chance to look at the five-year outlook of the things that we paid for in cash, I think this would fall under, I don't, you wouldn't borrow for something like this. You try to fit it in in a year where it makes sense for capital improvements. So I think when, when you have a chance to see what, how everything's there and how would we fit this in, at that point when we're looking at it, if you, as a, as a board member, if you want to suggest putting, putting that in in twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two and we plan for it, I think that would be a way forward and that would happen at Finance Committee at the end of August and then a board meeting in the middle of September. Or, or we could have another agenda item and the board could, you know, direct staff to try to fit it in somewhere in the, in the five-year plan, but it's not in there right now.
Yeah.
So either individually as a board member or as a group, you could direct staff to, to look into it more. I was just doing a search through our state administrator's website and see how many other people have inquired about solar and it's pretty minimal so far, I think. Edgerton was the only one that jumped out is they, they built a new, I think that's City of Edgerton, a new city hall a few years ago and they have solar.
I think Edgerton, you might, is doing that out of the airport. It's a big solar field.
They are.
Okay.
Yes, and the other things that I think utilities is kicking around is, you know, can the roof handle it? You know, do you, you know, do you install it and then two years later you gotta replace the roof? So do you really need to consider when the life of the roof?
Right.
As Brooke said tonight, in, in adjusting that, you know, so do you, that's another consideration too, is just, and can the roof hold it, which I think our roof can on the municipal building. I don't think that's an issue. It's just a matter of life expectancy of the roof and not replacing those panels over again before their life expectancy. So it really pays off for itself there.
Yeah, you maximize the, the life of the two of them together.
Yes.
I guess I would look at, I would look to utilities to make a recommendation to me as a board member. I wouldn't want to make that decision without input from utilities coming in.
So it started in utilities. The chair actually installed solar on his roof and was a hundred percent bought in on it. And for Heidi, I pointed on there, discussion was it's a shared building with law enforcement and then do we open it up to other municipal buildings? So I think that's where the discussion is led. I think, I mean, I don't want to speak for the utility commission in longer, but everyone's pretty much interested at the time. But some of the questions that John had mentioned about the roof, you know, when was the last replaced and some of those questions.
I would add that Public Works is public property, so they'd, they'd probably be the, I mean, utility would have a, you know, certainly they should have their input, but building maintenance and all that falls under Public Works and properties.
And I guess more than just, I, I'm looking more for the recommendation on, and they have questions with, maybe that be the committee that do a lot of the investigation and get those questions answered and then tell us if that's something we should even consider putting in our five-year plan. That would be what I would look for.
We can put that in Public Works, I think, JJ, as far as agenda get, start kicking around. Probably have Charlie come back and share with whatever he's gotten again. All right, we'll move on to item twelve then. It is the motion to have the Village of Cottage Grove Board enter a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight one parentheses one parentheses E, deliberating negotiating purchase of public properties, investment of public funds, and conducting other specified public business whenever competitive bargaining reasons require closed session. This closed session is for the negotiations, tid number five.
I'll second.
Motion second. No call, please.
Williams?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Limburg?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Valencia?
Aye.
Here in closed session.